Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to order. Today is June, July 13, 2021, and it is around 6:03 PM in the evening. And Ms. Brown, would you like to take attendance?
Certainly. Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Present.
And Jessica Brown is here. We have a quorum.
Okay, and also with us, we have Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith. I don't know what's wrong with me lately. I look at people, I can't remember names. Thank you, Mrs. Oden. So, let's get going here. First thing on the agenda is Franklin Street, and we have three things this evening. We have the playground, the furnace, and the rigging. Mr. Smith?
Actually, the first thing is the playground, I think, Mr. Donovan. You were talking about that.
Mr. Donovan on the playground? Okay, Mr. Donovan.
Yes, so as you're aware, we have the new facility at Franklin Street, so we needed a playground for the preschool students. We did look at potentially moving some of the items at New Searls over there, but they're in concrete, they're difficult to move. Checked with plant operations, with Gary Connors specifically, and he said, "Dan, by the time you get them out, you'd probably end up ruining half of them. It's probably not worth trying to do that." So, we went out for bids to get playground equipment for Franklin Street. We received three bids, one from BYO Recreation for $21,000, one from O'Brien &amp; Sons for $60,000, and one for Miracle Recreation for $30,000. So, a committee was formed, led by Chelsea Gillis, who's the head of the preschool programming for the district. She met with some of the teachers and a couple other administrators, and they recommended we move forward with BYO Recreation. It gives, they have all the equipment that they feel is necessary, a slide, spring riders, swings, and a sand table. So, it had all the basics that they were looking for. And on top of that, it is the lowest price. So, the committee recommends that we approve the contract for a playground at Franklin Street at a cost of $21,008 from BYO Recreation. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Is this equipment sized for preschoolers, or is it more traditionally sized?
No, it's sized for preschoolers. There were some, I have a couple of the pictures here, but online, there are, where the bids are, Tara, up here, some pictures. So, it is preschool-sized.
Anything else? Another question?
Actually, I just had one more. And I recognize it is considerably lower than the other two bids, but are we, is it really enough equipment? I mean, that was pretty, were the other bids like significantly more equipment, or were they just cost higher?
They had a little bit more equipment, but keep in mind, the playground's only so large, so the committee felt they had everything they really needed. And we did check with Gary Connors, and he looked at the quality of the items, and he said, "Yeah", he agrees. So...
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Just to add on to that, the space considerations were consideration. He's on either, well, that side of the playground, we're putting up that emergency egress tower. It's gonna take a considerable footprint, right where the playground looks like it would go, so they had to work around that.
Thank you. I've got some, what type of materials is this? Is this more on the plastic side, that heavy?
Yes, it's, I believe it's the heavy plastic, and then there's sort of steel that goes into the ground, supports and things like that.
And I see that we're gonna supply a sand table there.
It's above ground, so it's not one that, it's not a sandbox, it's a sand table. And it does have a cover to it.
It does have a cover. So, no water can get into that?
That's my understanding, yes. I haven't personally seen one, but...
Because the reason I'm asking, I hate to have a sand table. The water's gonna get into it, and the sand is no good, and then we're gonna get sand fleas and bugs in there.
Yeah.
Because I know my kids said to me, "Do not get a sand table because of the bugs and the fleas," and that's a table up off the ground. And so, I'd like to get some information on that, because I just want to make sure that we're not spending money on piece of equipment that we can use on something else that's not gonna work.
Okay, well, that was one of the items they were looking for, but I can double-check with them if you'd like.
Could we?
Sure.
Okay, so, we have a motion, I'll make a motion, to approve the contract for the playground at Franklin Street with BYO Recreation at a cost of $21,008.10. Funding from account 91.9199460081200. And are we gonna do this not to exceed this amount? It shouldn't go any higher than...
No, it shouldn't go higher.
Okay, not to exceed the $21,008.10. Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on the table is the recommendation for the furnace.
Yes, so, we'd like, wanted to put in, install at Franklin Street is a perimeter heating system. So, it's something many of you probably have in your homes. It's radiators that go around various rooms that you have. Wanted to do the same thing at Franklin Street. Previously, there was a perimeter heating system, at least on the first and second floor, and what it lacks is a boiler, which we just have to connect through the existing piping. So, we went out and got solicited bids from various contractors, received three good quotes. They ranged from $46,000 to $52,000. I thought that was a nice, tight group. But the lowest bid was right here in town, FW Web. However, a couple things prompted, Mr. Donovan and I had a conversation, and we decided to move forward with it, and we're asking for your agreeing with that decision. One was the price is gonna increase on July 1st. That was for the low bid from FW Web. It was available immediately, which was important to us, so we get this all installed in time for the cooler weather. And the other two vendors, it was a lead time of a couple of months. So, that kind of led us to a decision, primarily to save money. So, 7%, if I did my math right, is about $3,000. And Mr. Donovan likes to save money, so, I like to save money too, but Mr. Donovan especially so. So, our recommendation is to purchase, Baderis is the brand name of the boiler, from FW Web, in an amount of $46,182.25. Funding to come from the Franklin Street School Fund.
Any questions? So, let me get this straight. We haven't done it yet, have we? We just kind of approved, you approved it, waiting for us to vote on it, so this way you could get it at this price?
Yeah, we put the purchase order out for it, so in a sense, we've committed to it. But based on the information we had, it made a lot of sense, but we certainly do officially need approval, yes.
Okay, so, we got it before the 7% increase, or did we get hit with the 7% increase?
We...
Before.
Before, okay.
So, we saved the $3,000 plus.
Okay.
Good job.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a recommendation that we approve the purchase of the Baderis, how do you pronounce that again?
Baderis.
Baderis, boiler, from FW Web, in the amount of $46,182.25. Funding to come from the Franklin Street School Fund.
All right, on the motion, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, next item is to hire a rigging firm. If, for those of you, I think all three of you went to Franklin Street School when we did our tour, if you went down in the boiler room with me, as you went in there on the right-hand side, you saw a big black thing, which was a chiller. We actually have two in each of the two high schools. This one hasn't worked in years, and it's defunct, and we need to remove it for one reason. That's where we're gonna put the new boiler that you just approved. So, we need a, it's well beyond our capability to move something like that. So, rigging companies set up all sorts of hoists and chains to move things up out of the boiler room and out of the building. That chiller is about 6,000, or, well, six tons, so 12,000 pounds, and this is what they specialize in. We're also gonna have them rig the new furnace that we just approved down into the boiler room, so get them both coming and going. We've been trying for better part of a month to try to get companies to bid on this. We have a list of about six companies we've been talking to. Some have returned our calls, some have said, "Oh, we're on vacation. We'll get right back to you." We're calling people today to try to get additional bids, but we haven't been successful. One said they'll get back to us later this week. So, what I'll ask tonight is that you award the bid, and then between now and the Board of Education meeting, if we happen to get another bid that's lower than that, then we can, you know, change it at the Board of Ed meeting. That's what I suggest we do. That's something we definitely have to do. We can't wait till the next finance meeting in August. So, my recommendation is to provisionally award a contract to Cody, Inc., the amount of $22,250 with funding come from the Franklin Street Fund.
Any questions?
No, I was gonna recommend, when we do the motion, that we just say contingent upon receipt of other bids between now and the board meeting. But I think it makes sense. It's very time-sensitive and necessary, so I think we should move forward with it.
Ms. Donovan, any questions?
I was just wondering, is it wise to put the price in there, seeing where somebody's going to bid? They could watch this and bid a couple hundred. I mean, usually bids are sealed, and competitors don't know what their competition is offering for a price?
Although I've already said the price, and we're already recorded.
Okay. Is it, is this much smaller than what was there, or is it, we're taking out that large?
So, we're taking out the chiller unit, which was used for air conditioning.
Oh, okay.
There's two boilers off on the side that are used for heating. Those are steam boilers. We're putting in a much fault, smaller furnace for perimeter heating.
Okay.
We'll still use those other two boilers when it's time to revamp the entire heating system. But that'll be, that'll be more for the air handlers that we hope to install.
Okay, so the heat, the building will not have air conditioning?
Not until we do the next phase, which I'm hopeful to do through joint special.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so I want to recommend that we award the contract to Cody, Inc., for Franklin Street School for the rigging work, in the amount not to exceed $22,500, contingent upon, we don't get any other bids between now and the full board meeting on July 26th. Is that the next year? July 26th. And the funding to come from Franklin Street School Fund. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I may have mistaken my memo. I see it now. So, the actual amount, I wrote down two numbers. It says 22,250, and then on the last line, it says 22,500. The actual quote is 22,250.
Okay.
So, I just saved you $250.
Okay, so I'll amend the amount to say $22,250.
All right. I'll second that.
Okay. On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, so this one, as you recall, we have our electricity provided through the wiring from Eversource, but we actually buy the supply, in other words, the electricity that we actually consume from other vendors. We're currently with Direct Energy. We've had various other electrical supply companies in the past. We are currently, as you see in the memo I wrote, that we're in a two-year contract at 6.845 cents per kilowatt hour. The price, and that contract expires this coming December. The rates are going up, most definitely. When we first started to look at this in March, we could probably get a contract for about the same as what we're paying right now, but we weren't quite ready to move at that point, unfortunately. So, I'll be giving you some rates tonight, and the recommendation will be to lock in probably for a four-year term. Can't really tell you which firm it'll be yet, because we're gonna get a couple of different quotes from two different suppliers, and these rates may very well change, because the rates when they give you are only good for 24 hours. So, I can give you the numbers tonight, and I will, at least for one of the vendors, the lowest one, but on the day of the Board of Education meeting, which I think is on the 26th, we'll have to go back to them and give us, you know, refresh the numbers. So, chances are, numbers are probably gonna go up, tick up slightly. So, for example, I'll tell you right now, the Evers, we're paying 6.845 cents per kilowatt hour, and Eversource rate is 8.826 cents. So, we're getting a pretty good break on that. So, the fixed price for four years, this is with Direct Energy, which is the same company we're with, is going, well, they're proposing 7.039 cents. If you want, I can give you the other numbers for three and two years, just so you'll have them. And I can also just forward this email to you tomorrow, which might be, I should've done that tonight. So, for three years, it was 7.04. For two years, it was 7.174. And for one year, it was 7.387. So, you can see, the longer you lock in, the lower the price becomes. But between three and four years, it's not much difference. The good thing about locking in for us is it provides budget certainty, which is good when we put together the budget this coming winter. Everything I read says utility rates are gonna continue to go up for the foreseeable future. And the solar company that we designed our PPA with for the solar, it indicates they're expecting a 2% per year increase for the next 20 years. So, I think locking in at some point would be a good idea. So, my, I'm not sure how to frame the recommendation, since we can't pick a company tonight or a rate, but my recommendation is to lock in for the, actually, I think I wrote down, I didn't write it down. Well, recommend that we lock in a new electrical contract at the best rate for the maximum period available. Those rates to be determined on the morning of July 26th.
Yeah, I guess, to me, the question, like, for example, the rates you just gave, you might choose a three-year versus a four-year. They're almost the same.
Right.
Now, when you, I look at CD rates and things like that, so it's slightly different. But did we talk to the city and the energy manager there?
We did. They are on a different schedule than us for electricity. We bought our natural gas with them. For electricity, we're off by about a year.
And did we check with the various experts out there, and they all agree it's going up?
So, yeah, so we've, I got two quotes individually from, like, Constellation Energy is the other big vendor for the Northeast, and we've also talked to brokers, and they are the, they're the people that go out and get pricing from everybody. My find, what I found is you actually pay more when you go through a broker, and they have to get their piece of the action too. That's why they're in business. Yes, the answer is yes. Their prices are going up. I mean, it's a bit of a gamble when you lock in, you know, something could happen two years from now, and the prices go down again.
So, let me ask a question here. So, if you lock in for three years, and the prices go down, will they allow you to readjust?
Not typically, no. You're locked in.
Okay. So, Eversource, you've checked whatever, so you've done about three companies, is that correct? You checked with three companies?
Yes.
And with a broker?
We've talked to brokers, and the prices are higher than these.
I'm sure, have to take their cut. They're the middleman. So, this is considered commercial property, right?
Yes.
Okay, so have you, what other energy suppliers are out there that does commercial? Anybody else in competition?
What other vendors? Seems to me to be very regional. So, for us, Direct Energy and Constellation are the two biggies. We went with a much smaller company, went bankrupt three years ago, and we had to scramble. That's how we ended up with Direct Energy.
Yeah, they got, they got, they got bought out by Direct Energy, so it didn't change our contract. They...
We have to, we did have a new contract with them, though.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't lose anything, except for a little bit of term.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a good idea to stick up with, I don't want to go with a small company, because you risked going bankrupt with them.
You can do that with a big bank too, you know? There's a risk of anything these days.
There is.
You know, look at all these small businesses that got hit bad from, on the pandemic. Okay, so you want, you're looking for a motion for us to lock in the new electrical contract with the best rates to be determined on July 26th at the full board meeting for a long term of three to four years?
Yes.
Three to four years. Okay, that's the motion.
And Mr. Donovan and I will look at it before then, so...
Okay, we'll get the update at the full board. Ms. Oden?
I have a question. We are going to have a special board meeting due to hiring before the next board meeting, so I'm wondering if the price is good at that, it's before the 26th. Would it be wise to leave the date off at this point? Because if you got a quote the day of the special board of ed meeting, and it was, was decent, you thought it was good, we could vote on it that day, that night, I would think.
We probably, so we couldn't amend it to put, to be at either the special board of education meeting or the regular board meeting, July 26th, just so it gives us both options, so it can be on the agenda, or it won't be on the agenda?
Well, it could be on the agenda, and you just say we had to, you know, we're putting this off until the next full board meeting, but if, if time seems to be an issue that it's going up, if it's...
Right.
Seems, seems like it, it makes sense to do it the earlier the better. We do have that special board meeting to hire.
Right, so it could be locked in before that, right after that, if they know. So, why don't we amend it to put either at the special board of ed meeting or the regular board meeting on July 26th? This way, it gives us those options. So, if need be, it can be put on the agenda.
And is, and is that meeting next week sometime?
Not, not sure. We, we didn't set a date for it.
Okay.
But, you know, this time of the year, if somebody, if you have a candidate for a position, I know the high school has one, the CTE program, we'd like to hire them as soon as possible, so we could have a special board of ed meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that gives us options here, if needed. Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Good suggestion. Can I second, Mrs. Oden?
Second.
All right, and any questions on the motion? All right, on the motion, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown votes yes. It is unanimous pass.
I think we could say all in favor.
Oh, you're right, because, thank you. All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the special ed contracts for FY '22.
Do my best.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Have a good night.
Okay, the first special ed contract was brought forward last month, but due to the size of the increase, we went back to the vendor and basically received a lower price, 50% lower. So, it was certainly worth going back. This is the company that has been doing our physical therapy services for a number of years now. There, the total per hour increase is now 5%. It was 11%. And therefore, and the total amount of the contract is basically, is $213,925, which is actually a little bit lower than it was last year. The reality of contracts like this, if the students need the services, we still provide the services, and a lot of times, we'll have a little money left in the IDEA grant, so we'll cover it that way. So, that's what this contract's for. Like I said, we've been working with this vendor for a number of years. We do plan on going out for bids on the OT and PT contracts in the fall. We thought, the plan was to try to do it this year, but with COVID and everything else, it didn't make a lot of sense. It'll be interesting as we go forward, services like this, sometimes the pandemic may have affected them. We may have some people that have left the education part of PT and maybe moved on to something different. We'll find out as the year goes on, but...
Any questions? Ms. Brown?
Just to clarify, is this, seems like a month ago or something, we were, was this the same contract, or is this a different type of services?
No, this, we had the, the OT, we approved, and then this is the PT.
Thank you.
I have a question here. What percentage, how much does the feds pay on IDEA? They never did come to that 100% that they were supposed to pay. That was a dream that everybody was gonna have.
Yeah, they don't pay a percent. They give us a dollar amount each year. Typically, it ranges from 3.2 to $4 million a year. We use that for certain staff members that work with special education students. We don't use it for these two contracts. The OT and PT contracts are in our operating budget. That sometimes can handle overflow, but it doesn't handle the specific contracts.
So, out of the money that we get, that 3.2 to $4 million a year, is that spent more on out-of-district placement? That's in our budget?
Yeah, it's not out-of-district. It's mostly, most of the money is spent on staff that work for the national school district, and they're funded by this grant. That's where most of the money goes. But there are other services, which, nursing services, for example. The next couple of contracts that we run into, both of those are for IDEA. So, it's, it's mostly staff and outside services.
So, it's for staff, outside services. And this money covers all of that, with nothing left over, or are we usually in the negative with this?
Well, you can't go in the negative. But we, we spend, you're given the money, and you basically have a two-year period to spend it, but each year, you get a grant. So, we'll spend all the money that we're given.
Okay, because what I mean the negative, that we, we get to the end, and then we have to put money in from the budget.
Yeah, but we sort of, the way we manage it is we say, "Okay, here's the operating budget. We'll pay for these items. IDEA, we'll pay for these items," and that's the original budget. Then, as the year goes on, we can make adjustments, just like we make transfers to the operating budget, we can do the same thing to IDEA. If, for example, we had a teacher in the grant who was making, let's say, $50,000, that teacher left, and we replaced it with a teacher making, let's say, $45,000, we'd have a $5,000 delta, so we could use that on other items. We have to reallocate it within the grant and get approval. But our goal on all the grants that we get is to spend all the money, most of the time. But our goal on all the grants that we get is to spend all the money, most of the time we do that.
So with the grants that we get, I'd like to see, maybe, I don't know if anybody else on the board would like to see, but I'd like to kind of get like a little spreadsheet on how, with the grant money, and see how it's really allocated.
Well, if you look in the book, in the budget book that we just put out, it's, there's one of the sections in there that lists the grants, the significant grants, might I say, it doesn't list all the grants, but most of them. And it lists the activities that each one of the grants deals with.
Okay, I'll have to go back and take a look at that. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so I'm gonna recommend to approve the contract with ABC Physical Therapy for PT Services for the '21-'22 school year at a cost not to exceed $213,925, to be funded by account number 91.1.00, excuse me, 022-160-63614.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Donovan, I want to say thank you for going back and renegotiating that.
Sure, it seemed a bit high to me, yes.
And the next one we have is the food service audit.
No, there's, there's a couple more contracts, actually.
For the blind?
Yeah, there's-
Carol Center for the Blind.
Yes, and this is the, the group we've been working with for, for years. They provide orientation and mobility training for our visually impaired students. Their hourly rate has stayed the same for the last three years, there's been no increase. This, the teachers that work with these students are happy with this group, these people that have been helping us. So the total contract is $5,000 higher than it was last year, but the, the hourly rate's the same, we just expect to need a few more services based on the student population. And this contract is funded using the IDEA grant.
Is there any questions? Go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, do we have students that use the service at all levels? Elementary, middle school, and high school, do you know?
I believe we do.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? I'm gonna recommend to approve the contract with Carol Center for the Blind to provide orientation and mobility training for visually impaired students at a cost not to exceed $45,000, funding to be provided by the IDEA grant.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the third contract is with interim healthcare. They provide nursing services for special education students while attending the Nashua schools. We do have nurses, obviously, in each one of our schools, but this is when students need more of a one-on-one type of nursing per their IEP. So we, we have used this group for the last couple of years. Their rates are the same as they were last year. And the total contract is, once again, it's 5,000, just like Carol Center was 5,000 higher, so we expect a few more hours of service, but in total, the rate per hour is the same. And this is also being charged to the IDEA grant.
Is there any questions? Ms. Brown?
Typically, when students get this kind of extensive services, does that ever go to Medicaid or Medicare, Medicaid?
Yes, we do apply for Medicaid reimbursement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I recommend to approve the contract with interim healthcare for the nursing services for special education students at a cost not to exceed $35,000, to be funded by the IDEA grant.
Second.
On the motion, in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next is the food service audit.
Okay, this is just more informational, just to let you know that we did have, typically, the food service program is audited every four years, and, and it's usually a pretty exhaustive audit due to COVID and not having the services provided as much in, in detail as, as previous years. They did do an audit again, it was a simpler audit, but in fact, it was an audit. This is basically the letter explaining that, for the most part, everything is fine. They did give us a couple of what they call technical assistance points, or going forward, please do this. So we will move forward with those. But I just wanted to sort of bring this forward so the board and public can see that, you know, our food service team has done a very good job through a relatively difficult time the last couple of years. They've continued to feed students and they've continued to do it in a manner that's good enough for the state and the federal government, so.
Perfect. Ms. Oden, do you have any questions?
No.
Ms. Brown?
I just say thank you to them, they feed a lot of our kids.
Yep.
I'm grateful for those services, thank you.
So on the food service, how much are we in debt now on that? Because it used to, the students used to pay for it, used to make it, it didn't come out of the budget at one time because the students paid for lunches, which supported-
Yes.
Lunch services?
Yeah, so we'll be talking about that in a minute with the forecast.
Okay, see, I dip the head. Okay, Mr. Donovan, on the forecast.
Okay, so I passed out the sheet as I tried to update this the day of. So this forecast has a lot more information, still missing one key component that we'll know the answer to actually on Thursday, but if you flip it over to the back page and you can take a look at that box, it had a, a remaining of 2.173 million, but we made some entries and motions last meeting and moved some money around. And we've spent some of that money, and there's still 879,000 that isn't spent, but we'll put in escrow, so we won't lose the funds. So at this point, after spending those funds, and we'll go over them a little more detail later, but there should be about 1.293 million left in the operating budget. And I'll, let me just sort of run through it and I'll talk about some of the expenses, some of the items that we purchased with the extra money. It's not like we just sent it all back to the city, because we, we did use a lot of it ourselves for items that, that we would, that we needed. So for flipping back to the front page, the salaries and wages, the first summer payment is going to be made Thursday, so we'll have a, a, pretty much a tied-down number. That's the first of four payments teacher, teachers receive during the summer that needs to be charged back to this budget, because that's for services they provided last school year. So that's the estimate, the 6.97 million. If you look in that summer column, that's what I'm speaking to there. Then the, under the wages part-time, you see the 1.5 million. That's the amount that I have right now in food service. The, the actual loss for the, the food service right now is about 1.2 million in the negative, okay? So we, I've spoken with the city, we're gonna be able to use this fund, there probably has to be an appropriation done. But we're hoping not just to, because if all we do is put the 1.2 million, they start off the year with nothing. Keep in mind, two years ago, before COVID kicked in at all, they had an outstanding balance of about 450,000. So that was sort of what they were rolling over the last couple of years, so they were a profitable venture. So I'm hoping that when we make this transfer, we'll give them a little bit of so-called working capital. Because most of their, most, all the, the money they, we get from the government is reimbursed. We have to spend it before we get it back. So that's the plan, there still has to be some paperwork done with the city, but that's the number that I'm using in the forecast, that we, we take 1.5 out of the operating budget. So we're sort of fortunate in a sense that, you know, the children got fed, it wasn't, it wasn't managed well. We, we've tried to use CARES Act money, they've said no, you can't use CARES Act money for this type of thing. So we have the money this year. Now, tomorrow, Derek and myself are gonna be meeting with Dahlia, the food service director, and another person, and we're working on a forecast for next year. So what we have to do going forward is, because the government has already made the decision that they're going to give free lunch to everyone all next school year, okay? So we, we still are making the assumption, or that's what we'll be talking about, there still will be students, as long as we can have our schools open and the cafeterias open, some students will still come in and buy lunches. Just because there's a free lunch, they may not take it because they want, you know, they want something that isn't free, let's say. They want the a la carte or whatever. So we still expect to be able to get some of that money. And the federal government is supposedly bumping up the rate a bit. So what we're going to do is make estimates based upon the numbers that we got at the end of the year. When the students were back in the building in, in May and June, our numbers did a lot better. Because schools were open, most of the kids were in. So making the assumption that we're going back to school in the fall, which I don't have any reason to believe we're not, we're gonna use that and we're gonna model the food service going forward. And we have to do that because it just happens to be that their contract is also up. So we'll, we'll model out what, what we think we're gonna get for revenue, and then we'll, based on the revenue, we'll see how many staff we need and, and calculate the costs. So we'll be doing that over the next few weeks. And this, but the one, if we can get the 1.5 moved ahead, then we should be in good shape to start the year off.
Any questions? Ms. Oden?
Is this going to affect the money we get from the state? Because I know when people did not fill out the forms because we were giving lunch, we lost money from the state.
We did.
Is that going to happen again?
Well, I just got some information today, which I haven't fully vetted yet, but the, the new budget that was just passed by the state includes the possibility or the potential that we could use 1920 numbers for the adequacy funding, which would therefore bring those numbers back up. So, like I said, I got the email today, I read it, I didn't, I didn't do my ticking and tying with the numbers yet. But what I read was, was good news.
Are you, do you mean the numbers from the 1920 school year or the 2020?
Yes, the 1920, yes.
Oh, that would be great.
So they're, they're talking, I believe what the led, the, the new budget has in it, you can use those numbers for your, your membership, your, your total number of students, and you can also use those numbers for the free and reduced. So that would bring our adequacy funding back up. And, and that's a good thing citywide, obviously. But also, we still have to, we have to be able to get the students in the cafeterias, that's the only way we can, we can make any money to feed all the students.
And would that be retroactive to the last school year that just finished in?
No, wouldn't be retro, it's for '22 and for '23.
Okay, thank you, better than nothing.
Ms. Brown? When you're talking about the funding of the food service and how it gets reimbursed, do we only get paid, do we get reimbursed for the wages of employees? Or for like, you know, the services, actually make the food and distribute the food, or only for the food itself?
No, you get a price per meal back. So that includes a certain component of labor. You don't get to, the, the government comes up with an amount, let's say, $3 per lunch or something like that.
And, and I just don't know which way I was reading this, so is the seven cents per lunch that will be the cost, we'll get seven cents per lunch back more, or is that, the cost of lunch goes going up seven percents? Is it cost-
It's, we'll get more, that's seven cents, they increased that and we'll continue to get that.
I actually have one more question. I know there's some discussion about making full-time lunches, or for lunches and breakfasts, correct, for everyone possibly permanent? Is that coming from a federal level? And is that, I mean, I know it's not through yet, but.
Yeah, there's talk about, that would be at the federal level, yes.
Thank you.
Question is, and when you're saying that some kids might buy a la carte, is there certain lunches, menus that the government's gonna pay for, certain meals that they're gonna dictate?
Yes, they'll, they're, they have specific requirements on what needs to be in each meal. So typically, let's say at the high school, there's two or three meals that are, the government will pay their $3, let's say, per meal. But if we wanted to, let's say, make sushi or something like that, we wouldn't charge just $3, but we could probably charge $6. I'm just making these numbers up, I'm not a chef. So, but you could, you could create other things where the students would buy them. And, you know, typically, you make, they make a little more money on those. And it's not that they're just trying to get more money from those students, it's just they sort of round it off. The government's very specific, they give you an exact amount, and you have to have so many grains, and you have to have so many proteins. And so there's all these very detailed rules you have to follow for it to fit as a reimbursable lunch per the federal government guidelines. A la carte, you can sell anything you want. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna sell gummy bears, right, but.
I just wanted to double check with that. Okay, anything, any other questions? Ms. Oden?
And I think the a la carte's only at the high school, do they have that at the middle school too?
Typically, they have, they might have a couple of things at the middle school, but it's mostly the high school, yes.
I don't think the elementary schools have anything like that.
No, they don't.
Ms. Brown, any other questions?
No, no other questions, but actually, it may be a possible suggestion to consider. I think the last couple of years, they got rid of the, like you could go, students who packed their lunch could still go buy milk a la carte at the elementary school level. I mean, it wouldn't be a huge bump in profit, but it might be worth reconsidering bringing that back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Donovan.
Okay, so that's what those two big numbers are. Retirement and separation paid at 81,000, those are payments we're making to a couple of staff that left. And I'm gonna, they haven't been paid yet, they're gonna be paid in July, and I'm gonna pull them back into this year, because they left during the month of June. Okay, so then going for, going down further, you'll see in that summer column, I have a $200,000 item under legal services. That's something that I, I believe the board is gonna discuss with the superintendent and myself and an attorney or two in the next couple of weeks or so. I don't know exactly when the meeting's scheduled, but I just wanted to, if there is going to be some sort of payment or settlement of some sort, I would like it to come out of these funds instead of having it come out of next year. Then as we move forward down to property service, you'll see the 14,000. That's an amount that the Brentwood, you pay so much per month on a lease, and then at the end of the year, they do a common area maintenance fee, and, and that's shared amongst all the tenants based on the amount of square footage you rent. So we'll put that, that's just an estimate that I have based on last year. Okay, and then other services, most of the costs are in there. We do have 100,000 left for out of district, there's a couple of invoices where the schools have simply not sent us any money, sent us the invoice yet. I believe it's a little less than 100, I just put that in to be, to be careful. And other than that, most, at this point in time, what's left to do, as I mentioned, is to pay the payroll, work on the food service. And then we go through over the next couple of weeks and we'll close out any purchase orders where the items won't be in, in the next few weeks or so, okay? So that typically just brings money back, it's not gonna get any worse, the, the spending won't get any worse. But most, most of those, the, if you look at the, the sheet, there's an encumbrance column, which is on the fourth from the, from the right, and you can see certain accounts still have dollar amounts in there. So those are purchase orders that have been sent out to vendors. to vendors, we just have not received the goods or the services yet. So what we do is review all those open purchase orders, and if they're very small amounts, we simply cancel them, if they're large amounts, and we just haven't received the equipment yet, we'll keep those open. If they're for services, and the services haven't been completed, we'll probably close those out, too. So, all in all, it looks like there will be that extra close to 1.3 million, which will go back to the city, but I just made a quick sheet of things that we used some of the excess money for this year, because it was such an odd year. You know, we did use the 165,000 to pay off the Smart Start at Main Dunstable, we did take 70,000 to pay for the, the gym floor that was flooded, we put 500,000 more into Franklin Street, 40,000 into the central office upgrades, we're going to pay off year three of the Franklin Street, that's not done yet, but that will be included. And then we also purchased about $100,000 worth of AP books at the high school for social studies and for science, I believe, books slash materials. So, basically, if there was any great need, I sort of reached out, I didn't, you know, people came back with, I need, you know, $900 or something, I didn't want to deal with that, because I didn't have time to deal with a multitude of small amounts, but we took a look at anything significant, and people were able to sort of upgrade and do some things with their funds that they hadn't been able to do in the last 10 years or so. So all in all, that's, that's probably where we stand, I'll give you an update next month, which should be pretty much done. We'll have more exact numbers, there'll be a little change going into September, but for the most part, this is, I'm pretty comfortable this is where we're going to end up.
Any other questions? Ms. Oden?
I have a couple. Can you remind me, what did we pay a month for Brentwood?
We were paying about 150,000 a year for the base rent.
A year or a month?
A year.
A year, okay.
Year.
And when we were talking about the, the money that we had left, I think you were going to nego, see if you could negotiate paying an extra year to Franklin Street for, am I remember that, remembering that correctly?
Well, yeah, I, I have to speak to the powers that be over there, to see if they'll take a little discount if we give them the year three in advance.
Okay, and where would that money come from?
From the operating budget.
Operating budget?
Yeah, that's-
Out of that 1.3 that you just mentioned?
It's already out of there.
Oh, it's already out.
I assumed we're going to make that payment.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's, that's fine.
Ms. Brown?
And is the, this year's operating budget ends this month before the 1st of August? Like, that's when this money would revert back to the city?
Essentially, as, most of it is essentially, the spending is done as of June 30th, but if there was a purchase order, we can still keep those funds encumbered until future. But by the end of this month, we'll have reviewed all the existing purchase orders, so there are already, the funds are already included in here. If for some reason, the items, we ordered 10, and we only got nine, and the vendor's not sending us another one, then we'll write off the purchase order, and there'll be savings that'll come back to us.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Donovan? Mr. Financial report?
Okay, financial report, sort of the same thing that we just went over, so I think we're all set there. And the final item is the transfer report, and compared to the last couple of months, it's, it's a lot smaller. So the first one is a transfer made at the South High School. They have, not the large auditorium, but they call it an auditorium, they have another room where they have probably about, I don't know, 60 seats or 50 seats or so. There's a, they did improvements to that, and they put in a new projector, and then they also put in some projectors in three or four other classrooms, so that's what this transfer was for, they basically moved it from supplies into equipment, and then purchased, most, most of the money went towards projectors, actually. Excuse me, the, the next one is an entry we made, we took it out of heating fuel, and we moved it, this was for the chiller that the board approved last month, that, where we had the problem that Mr. Smith brought forward with the chiller, so this was the transfer, so we could cover the cost of that chiller. The next one, we also made a transfer, we had, I had Mr. Lassard go through and look at all our AEDs, we do have an agreement with the company now, they come in once a year, and they test them and make sure they're okay. We had eight of the AEDs that were no longer covered, some of them were working, they were all working enough, but I figured since we had some extra money, let's take a look, so we decided to replace the eight of them that were no longer covered by the warranty, they would cost more to repair, I thought it was a good time that we could move ahead. They cost about $1,400 each. You know, it's one of those things, we received a lot of them from donations, and they, the company might give us eight or 10 of them, which is wonderful, but then they all sort of get old at the same time, so that's, this was lucky that we had a little extra money for that, too. Okay, the next one is the large entry that the board approved last month, and we're the funds for Franklin Street, and to pay year three of, of the Franklin Street le, purchase, and then the 40,000 for the central office upgrades, so those, those items that aren't spent will be moved into what they call an escrow, so they're still available, available to us to spend for the rest of next school year. The next one was a small entry needed, we needed a little more money, so they had some, curriculum had some money, this was to buy those books that I mentioned earlier, they had some money in some of their accounts, their labor accounts, that they didn't use for curriculum meetings and things like that, so we moved that into the books. And that's, the, the next entry is the same thing, we did the 34,000 one, and then we turned around, and we needed a little bit more money. So those are the transfers for the month of June.
Do I need to make a motion on this to accept the reports? Mr. Oden, you have a question?
What is an AED?
For the, if you have a heart attack, and you, you'll see them each-
A defibrillator?
Yeah, the defibrillators, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And they're kind of cool, if you've ever, they talk to you, so if you don't, if you've never used one before, you simply pull it off the wall and get it started, and it'll tell you what to do. Yeah, because I was always like, how many people know how to use these things? Now, you know, professional people do, but it, it speaks to you, and it, take this off, do this, do this, and, and the whole idea is to get you to the point from, you know, where you are until the ambulance or fire shows up to take over.
That's good.
Yeah. No, we hope, no, no one needs it. But it's, it's certainly something worthwhile having, right? Especially when we have a lot of people in our buildings, but the high school, sports events, things like that, because it's not typically the student, it's typically the visitors where this hap, that have the need for these.
Well, this way, people don't panic, it just helps you along here while you're waiting for the emergency personnel to come.
Yes.
So did you want me to make a motion to accept the financial and transfer report?
You don't have to do financial, but you should do the transfer, yes.
I couldn't remember, it's a month ago. I'm going to make a motion to accept the transfer report from June 2021.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, second by Ms. Oden. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion pass.
Anything else on the agenda tonight? Any, anything else on discussion? Do I hear motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? I'll second.
Motion to adjourn at 7:05. Ms., all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at 7:05.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, thank you, Mr. Donovan, quick meeting.